Okay, we are recording. It is, I believe it's ten oh two on Tuesday, the twenty fifth of April. This is notice of a public hearing pursuant to New York general municipal law eight five nine dash A on proposed project and financial assistance for the Market House Oswego LLC project. Notice was given that a public hearing pursuant to section eight five nine A of the New York general municipal law will be held by the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency on the twenty fifth day of April twenty twenty three at ten AM local time at the office of the agency located at forty four West Bridge Street, Oswego, New York, one three one two six in connection with the following matter. Market House Oswego LLC on behalf of itself or an entity formed or to be formed by it on its behalf, and eighteen thirty six Brewing Company LLC on behalf of itself or an entity formed or to be formed by it or on behalf, submitted an application to the agency on or about March seventh, twenty twenty three, a copy of which is on file at the office of the agency, requesting the agency consider undertaking a project for the benefit of the real estate holding company and the brewery operating company. Said project consists of the following. The acquisition of a leasehold interest in approximately point two two acres of real property located at one West Bridge Street in the city of Oswego, County of Oswego, State of New York, and the existing approximately eighteen thousand eight hundred square foot three story building located thereon. The renovation of the existing building to contain four residential units on each of the second and third floors for a total of eight residential units, and common space related there too, and a brewery in the basement and on the first floor, together with related site improvements. Then it would also include the acquisition and installation therein and thereon of various building materials, furniture, fixtures, machinery, equipment, and personal property not part of the equipment, considered the facility equipment, and together with a land and facility, which company facility is to be leased and subleased by the agency to the real estate holding company, and the real estate holding company will operate the residential units. The acquisition and installation of certain various building materials, furniture, fixtures, machinery, equipment, and personal property for the retail unit, and the retail unit is to be subleased by the real estate holding company to the brewery operating company, and the brewery operating company will also operate the retail unit. The granting of certain financial assistance in the form of exemptions from real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, mortgage recording tax is limited by section eight seven four of the New York general municipal law and state and local sales tax. This is collectively known as the financial assistance. And the granting of two hundred thousand dollars from the agency's HUD EDF loan fund. And the lease with an obligation to purchase or sell the company facility to the real estate holding company or such other person as may be designed by the real estate holding company and agreed upon by the agency and the lease, or sell the equipment to the brewery operating company and such other person as may be designated by the brewery operating company and agreed upon by the agency. So, to also let you know that the real estate holding company will be the initial owner of the project facility and the initial operator of the residential unit, and the brewery operating company will be the initial operator of the retail unit. The agency has not made a decision with respect to the undertaking of the project or granting of financial assistance. The agency will, and so to also let you know, the agency will be making those decisions at a meeting on Thursday, April twenty seventh later this week at nine AM. And the agency will at the above stated time and place hear all persons with views in favor or opposed to the project and/or the financial assistance. Except before, the copy of the application, including a cost benefit analysis, is available at the office of the agency for review by interested person. So at this time, I'm going to give a overview of what the project entails, including what the scope of the project is as well as what the project costs are and then the benefits that are being contemplated by the agency later this week. So the Market House Oswego LLC and eighteen thirty six Brewing Company LLC are the owners of the project. This project involves the renovation of the historic property located at one West first, or one West Bridge Street in the city of Oswego. An approximately eighteen thousand eight hundred square foot three story building built in eighteen twenty three on approximately zero point two two acres overlooking the Oswego River. The street level commercial space and a portion of the basement will be converted to a craft brewery, including a bar restaurant. There will be eight market rate apartments, which will be constructed on the second and third floors. The project will create five full-time jobs and thirty part-time jobs with a future total annual payroll of over six hundred thousand at the project location. The project costs, as we understand, is one and a half million for property acquisition that's taking place. Renovations that are going to be five million, eight hundred and forty thousand as of currently estimated. Five hundred and thirty thousand for furniture, fixtures, and equipment as currently estimated. Design and engineering costs of three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand of soft costs, and one hundred thousand in working capital for a total project cost, as we understand now, of eight million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The project has requested a sale-leaseback transaction, which is a pilot agreement. It is a deviation from our uniform tax exempt policies. It is a twenty-five year pilot agreement being requested. They have also requested two hundred thousand dollars in a loan from the HUD EDF loan fund. Other finance, or the other financial requests for the project were a exemption from sales tax for the project and an exemption from mortgage recording tax exemption for the project. The other financing sources, as we understand currently, are Pathfinder Bank, Restore New York grant, historic rehabilitation tax credits through New York State and the State Historic Preservation Office, Empire State Development Grant through New York State, National Grid Main Street Grant, City of Oswego Community Development Office loan, and an operation Oswego County loan. There is also equity from the company in the project. The collateral for the project would include a personal guarantee of Ed Alberts. It would include the second UCC lien on all assets of Market House Oswego LLC and eighteen thirty six Brewing Company, and a second mortgage on a co-equal prorata basis with the City of Oswego CDO and Operation Oswego County. That is for the loan portion of the project. The impact of the project is the renovation and repurposing of a vacant and becoming more dilapidated historic building along the Oswego River and main thoroughfare in the heart of the city of Oswego's growing downtown. It's going to be the creation of both a tourism destination and creating additional downtown residential units. It is going to be the restoration of a building on the National Register of Historic Places and the creation of five full-time and thirty part-time jobs with a total annual payroll of over six hundred thousand. And then the estimated average annual pilot payment over the period of the project is twenty-one thousand dollars per year versus the current normal taxes of eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars per year. So it'll be an increase in the taxes collected on the project. The real, the IDA assistance value, the real property tax exemption, and this is based on estimates of what the assessed value would be at the end of project. Real property tax exemption would be for forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six. Mortgage tax exemption would be for thirty thousand dollars. Sales tax exemption would be for four hundred and eighty thousand, and the financing assistance and the loan would be for two hundred thousand. I'll go back and state the real property tax exemption, forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six. That is an estimated annual savings. So at this time, that pretty much is the scope of the project, what the benefits of the project are and what the value of the incentives are. I will open it up to public comment at this time. I will start, let's start actually with the representatives from the project, because I may answer some questions before they pop up at this time.
Could we ask you two to identify yourselves for the rest?
Sure. I'm Abby Lever. I work with Albert's Group, which I've worked for eighteen years for Ed Alberts here in Oswego, and this is Kira.
I'm Kira.
I'm Kira Patterson. I've worked for Ed Alberts for about a year now, right after I graduated school, and this will be my first complete project with the group.
Yeah, so she's a quiddity, a grad, but a Fulton lacrosse player. So we're proud to have Kira on our team to help with development, because there's a lot of pieces here. But, you know, happy to answer any questions you have about the project, but we are looking to take the historic building instead of vacant since two thousand and even before then only about, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty.
Or twenty twenty, yeah. You missed twenty years. Yeah, I know, yeah, I just missed those twenty years in there. But before that, it was just a little portion of it was used by the restaurant, and it was vacant on the second and third floor, vacant in the basement, and these have been vacant for a number of years as well. So what we're looking at is working with Shippo and the Historic Board of New York State to go back and look at when there was a porch out the back, because all these are actually doors. So when there was a porch out the back, we're looking to add in some event space and brewery in the basement and be able to use this lower level that walks out onto the Riverwalk, and then have the market rate apartments upstairs. We already operate thirty-two apartments here in Oswego. They are fully rented, so we do see a demand for more market rate. And actually, we've had people reach out and ask about the apartments or any interest in leasing those. So we do have, you know, a tested model that we know that one and two bedroom model is something people are looking for. They want to live downtown. So what we want to do is combine locally made beer and a brewery and restaurant and a place where people want to come and join and live right downtown. So, yeah, that's what we're looking to do. Any other thoughts?
Oh.
I'll open it up to anyone else who's here for any comments.
I got a couple of things.
Sure, can you just announce yourself for the camera?
My name is Dustin Cora. So first off, we've seen issues, Canal Collins is a great example with parking in the rear. The lot size of this building, how many spaces are in that lot as is currently? Do you know?
Not to mention, it's also a city lot, not private.
Right, so where are the tenants going to park and where are the customers going to park and where's?
Employees going to park.
Employees going to park.
Sure, we went through a parking study with the city of Oswego. So if you're familiar with the Riverwalk, where we own a lot at the end of Riverwalk that we turned into parking, and we have eight extra spots there. So in addition to the spots at the end of the building that are owned by Riverwalk, we have eight spots for the tenants of the building to be in our private parking lot, because they need to reserve parking. In addition to that, we went through a city study. Jeff McGann from the city helped us through the parking planning, and they looked at all the parking spaces on West First Street, because people coming to a restaurant typically are okay. Like in Syracuse, you'd walk within a block to park there. So they would come into there. As far as employees, what we know from Riverwalk, not every employee drives to work, but those that do, there's plenty of downtown parking. We park in the city lots across the street on West First Street and down farther as well. I don't anticipate any problems with parking for residents, employees, or customers.
Do you have quantifiable numbers of how many exact spaces are there?
I haven't counted. I mean, my office is right there. I can go count. But the city lot is open parking as well as the lot across from West First Street.
There's no overnight parking in the city lot, though.
We wouldn't need overnight parking. We have private lot. Our tenants would have a private parking spot in our lot.
Two per unit or one?
How many bedroom, or is it a one or two bedroom units?
And what about guests?
There's two, two bedroom, no, sorry, four two bedroom units, four one bedroom units. So it's two parking spaces per unit, and we do have those in the parking lot that we own. So those would be designated apartment parking slots.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, didn't you say you had eight parking spots?
Yes, two, or.
There's eight open right now.
This was open.
We have.
You understand there's sixteen allocated for residents, and you have thirty employees. I presume fifteen of them will probably be, ten of them at least on ship at a given time, plus customers, plus other businesses in the area who also share those parking spaces, presumably.
Yeah, the city has done their review and hasn't found any, you know, they did a parking spot review of the whole of downtown and where people are, if you walk, if you drive down West First Street, right down by the Pell Times, there's plenty of street parking there as well. So they didn't anticipate.
So just to, on the process side, the site, parking is part of the city's site plan review, which this project has gone through and completed, and the city has approved. And I don't, I don't know per se, I don't honestly know exactly how the city's parking rules work, but the city worked through that with the project and has approved. In order to approve the site plan, a parking plan in a downtown situation like this would have to be approved. In fact, for any, any business, the parking plan has to be approved. Downtown businesses generally, probably always in the city rely on some mix of street parking, and in some cases their own private parking, but in other cases only street parking. And I'm sure that was taken into consideration. I mean, the parking plan as part of the site plan has absolutely been approved by the city. We do not have copies of it here. They're available here.
Just city of winter season, particularly when parking is restricted at certain times. Their private lot, I don't think it's going to support all of those. And which I understand the city has done their review.
Sure, and I can just state from the IDA's perspective, the IDA, you know, we are applying, we approve financing and benefits based on the project. We adopt, we don't do our own separate, you know, site plan review process for a project. If the city has approved it, that we would adopt the city. So if the city has approved something like that, we would, we would consider it acceptable to the city in that kind of a. There are times where we become a lead agency for a project, but this is not one of those times. In terms of, so if the city has approved of the parking plan, parking study, that would be acceptable to us. Obviously, it would, you know, it would be interesting as the, as this grows to understand if there would be future parking plans. You know, obviously, we expect this to be a successful business, which will then draw more customers and more things and put more, more pressure on parking. So, you know, I don't know if that has been thought about for future in terms of what, what could potentially be done for more parking, but.
Are there other businesses that share those spots on First Street as well? Would be my concern for the other businesses as well. It could become an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at this also as a way, I mean, this is going to be beneficial to other businesses on West First Street. If this is drawing more people to the area who are then going here and then also going to be utilizing other businesses that they may not have done otherwise, it's going to have added benefits, not just taking away parking. So it's going to have, you know, it's going to, I think it will probably bring more traffic to downtown. That's not necessarily a bad thing. Any other questions?
I guess I have a parking related question. Run it to Gay.
Okay.
East Third Street. With parking becoming a bit more scarce, would there be more designated spots for handicapped people?
That would have to be a question that the city would have to address.
Okay, has the city addressed that so far?
I'm not aware if they have or not. That would be something that if, I'm not aware of in this project, they have not. We just received the city's approved site plan, you know, approval for the project. But that would be something, and maybe you can answer, Abby, is there any, on the site of this project, is there any allocated handicap parking spaces or is it strictly utilizing public space?
You know, in front of the coffee shop, there are a couple handicap spots. I'm trying to think of in the, in the street in the back, if there's any on either side. Yeah, we have to look into where those are and how many.
Good. Going off of that note, is the property handicap accessible as well?
We're working through that process to make sure that everything's ADA. So what we're doing, I can show you on the front, is the other page of the front.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you want to show this?
Sure.
Where you're looking at the curb cut?
So right now, there's no, the curb is kind of broken down in the front here, but we are working with the architects and the engineers to make sure everything is ADA accessible. So the elevator will be ADA accessible, the bathrooms, all of that. And we will have a ramp starting here going up to this main door. And then there will also be one on this side to lead up to that same main door in the front there.
And then once they're in the restaurant, they can take the elevator down to the lower floor for the event space, because it is a little, there is actually that, I don't know if you're familiar with like the triangles that the city built for handicap accessible down to the Riverwalk. So they could come in the back for an event, but they can also take the elevator from the main floor down into the event space. We are preserving the historic stair inside, which is beautiful. There's a circular stair that's been there.
Hundred. Since the building was created.
Eighteen thirty six. Yeah, I won't do the math, but since eighteen thirty six, there's a beautiful historic stair that goes up to the apartments, but the apartments will also have the elevator as well. And there's a nice wide sidewalk. I don't think the ramp is going to affect, you know, what the city has done there with the pocket park and the sidewalks. I think it'll be accessible still.
I have a question in terms of the, and I think it's been addressed in the past. I don't know if there's any more additional new information. The original, the, the plan as of now is to stabilize the annex building between the main, main building and bridge, and the bridge, is that still the plan as of now?
Yes, they've been working through the plans to stabilize. They have very unique ways where they build a wall and make sure that the bricks are stable and also do some things in the basement. Do you know the engineering?
I don't know the engineering, but they build a wall on the inside and drill holes through the brick to kind of pull the brick in. So that, because right now it's bowing like this towards the outside, so they kind of pull it in with those anchors to stabilize it and make sure that it doesn't fall down.
And can you elaborate at all in terms of why the plan is to stabilize that versus renovate that now?
So the cost estimates that came through since COVID and the cost had gone up on everything. You know, when we first started talking about this project, it was, it was, you know, this like, oh, you know, we can do this for, you know, X amount of money. We thought we could get Restore New York money. Our application for Restore New York grant was four million. What came in was a very generous one point two five million, which is amazing from New York State to share that with the project. But because it wasn't the full amount, we had to figure, okay, the main building is the part that is most stable. It has the most basement and, you know, building stability. We wanted to try to save the other two buildings. They are contributing.
Yes, they're contributing to the Historical Preservation Society. So we would save them and look at restoring them at a later date.
Yes, so we could go back and look for more Restore New York or any other historic grants in the future. But the cost associated, because it's all brick and the basements are so damaged over time, it just, it, the property has not been cared for in a manner that, that would have helped save the building. There's a lot of water damage and basement damage and brick.
So that's a, it's a condition of the progress to stabilize that building
Yes.
to be able to receive the other grant funding and tax credits.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we want to make sure that we stabilize, because Shippo realizes that you can't do everything you'd like to do all the time, that maybe you could come back in the future and, and make those buildings something to be, you know, there's, there's a demand for retail space downtown. There's a need for more, you know, more of everything. So I think there's a future need that could be office space in the future or something like that. We'll have to see what, what they, what they come up with.
Are there any other approvals required by the city of Oswego before you can receive your building permit at this time? Or have you satisfied everything that the city has?
We'll have our final plans within the next two weeks. We have mechanicals coming in by May first. So as soon as we get the mechanical and final electrical plans, there was a few things related to plumbing and electrical to coordinate the brewery equipment and what they needed for the site and where the water and sewer and electric and power come, gas come into the building. As soon as we have those mechanicals, we can turn those in. We have the preliminary approval. It's just the final plans. The city likes to look at, obviously, the power and electric plants. We plan to have that by mid-May turned into the city at the latest. We'd hope to have it by May first, we're a couple of days behind, just going back and forth with the brewery manufacturers to make sure we have everything that we need in that plan, so we can dig the hole in the ground once, be ready for growth and, and ready for the production of the beer as well as the restaurant having and utilities for that.
Is there any plans to do anything with Water Street? Is there, is the city talked at all about what their future plans are as of now? It's a one-way street coming this way. Is there any plan? I don't, and maybe there's nothing to share at this point, but.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, I haven't heard any final decisions. That what we were hoping was the National Grid would be removing the overhead wires, because if you look at downtown, this Water Street area is the only spot in the downtown riverfront that has overhead electrical lines. So we had hoped, and we've been working for years trying to get those to be buried, because we also need, the whole area needs more power. Our coffee shop building needs more power. Other buildings need more power. So in order for National Grid to do the transformer work, we had hoped and still hope that we could get those lines buried and less of an eyesore for people enjoying the river. But no, nothing specifically about changing the one-way or, I know there are some storefronts down below. We have had some problems with the homeless population and some break-ins and things like that, because the building's been, you know, vacant and some people kind of moving into sections of the building where there's protection from the wind. There's some other dilapidated buildings on Water Street on the area that we would hope with the renovation of this building, it could inspire some of the other spaces that are currently empty to, to develop. Because there'll be people, there will be more people, and hopefully that'll curb some of that.
In terms of timeline, what's your timeline to begin the project?
June first, we hope to start construction. So we're going out to bid as soon as we get approval from the city for the final drawings. So we hope to start in June for construction.
And that's also pending, you know, Shippo approval, the New York State Historic Society, as well as the city.
Open, any other questions? Yes.
Question for you guys. The first floor, would that be entirely the brewery and restaurant for now?
It would be all restaurant.
Restaurant.
Kind of like the old, where it was Water Street Cafe and Old City Bar.
Yes, yes. Yep, but no, the toilets facing each other in the ladies' room, the best friend toilets, that didn't, it didn't work in the plans, so.
Okay, that's good enough. It's the same way in the metro.
So.
Is it? Yeah.
How would you close off the annex building? Is it current, I mean, I know right now you can kind of currently walk through first floor into the annex building space. Is that just going to be closed off and?
Yes. Yeah, obviously, we'd still be able to access that building through the outside, because if there was a fire or, you know, whether like, if emergency personnel needed to get in there and to prevent pests, we'd have to do some work for that. But yeah, we'd still be able to, obviously, to get into it. But we are going to have to clean up, you know, those front windows were broken right on Bridge Street, and the block stairs are deteriorated. So there's some, and it does say I Love Beth on the front of the building and some paint. So we're going to have to do some work there. We want to be a good neighbor and have it look good as people drive across the bridge and walk downtown.
Any other questions or comments or concerns to be brought up?
I was, I heard a twenty-five year pilot program, but there was other, you know, tax exemptions and so on.
Sure.
How long are those, you know, sales tax exemptions, something like that? How long are those going down?
So the way that the sales tax exemptions work is it's strictly related to the buildout of the facility. So within the app, within the project, we determine based on the construction period. So say if it starts June one and it's through, say, March, March thirty-one of twenty-four, that, that's strictly what the, the period that the sales tax exemption would be approved for, and it's only for doing the things related to construction and outfitting of the space. So putting in the mechanicals, the equipment, FF and the furnitures, fixtures, that kind of stuff. It's not related on an ongoing basis throughout the project. It's just related to the construction period.
Okay, sure. Now, the pilot programs, I've been a member of this community for, well, my whole life. And I saw the pilot program come in with Miller, and twenty years, they're gone. Is this going to happen again?
Couldn't say for sure if that would happen. I just know that, you know, to be able to, and I let Abby, you know, speak to this, that the, the project doesn't make financial sense without incentives into the project to do it for this type of building, for historic building that needs that kind of work. I don't believe that their plan would be to close it after that period of time. But that's, none of us have a crystal ball on anything like that. And, you know, really, the, the benefits are associated with the project during the time. But like I said, I mean, there's all sorts of businesses out there that we've assisted, and that's, you know, that's not a great, that's not a good one. But that one, that one really closed due to market forces. It wasn't due to the actual pilot agreement.
Yeah, this is just that little carrot. You know, they talk about New York State and the government trying to help people, encourage them to start businesses, so they create jobs, encourage people to build housing so that there's more housing. So the government and agencies partner to help encourage entrepreneurs and businesses to grow. So they give you a tax incentive for your home, you know, if you own a home, you get a mortgage tax exemption. The same thing for this is that if the city is currently, you know, city and county and taxes on the property is currently, you know, one thousand dollars, and through this agreement, the city and county and everybody gets two thousand dollars, you know, whatever that number is, it's still more than the municipalities currently get while also encouraging the development. So when you look at, you know, development of the community, creation of jobs, creation of housing, we want to bring people here to work at the large businesses and the small businesses, but in order to attract. Um, you know, doctors, medical people, and even the, um, engineers out of the nuclear plants and college, um, professors. Having a building where they can come and live, it's a turnkey, really nice, um, easy to get into. Um, you know, we have snowbirds and things like that too, but it, we wanna bring people to the community. We need to provide housing. We wanna bring people together. We wanna offer, um, you know, a cool place to go and and enjoy the river and and people to be close to, close to the water and and be downtown. So so that I think those tax incentives are made to help encourage the business. And once the building is renovated, if thirty years down the road we were to sell, then another business would be doing the same thing there. Because it's already built out as a restaurant and apartment. So there's, um, we're we're not going anywhere. That's why Ed hires me and then and then we hire Kira. We said, who's the next Abby? Like, who's the person that's gonna keep the the development going? And we wanna continue to to add, um, opportunities and and build Oswego. We're really passionate about building Oswego.
What is the projected lease for apartment?
Um, our current total apartment rents right now are two thousand. Yeah, so is that furniture bedroom?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, obviously, the ones with a view of the lake and the lighthouse would be on the higher side. Um, but we're right in that two thousand dollar range. And and like I said, I have thirty-two apartments at Riverwalk. We're completely full with a long waiting list. Um, and we have, even as people have moved in, completed their year lease, then their house is ready and they move out. We have another person or a couple looking to move right in, so no problems with occupancy at all.
That's great. Um, so. So what's that sixteen thousand dollars a month revenue in the apartments plus the brewery, restaurant revenues? Um, I understand, uh, repairing, the rehabilitation and preservation of a quote dilapidated historic building. Um, but all of these monies being pulled out of the community, um, I'm aware that that is not a resident of Oswego. So all of these monies that are being pulled out of the community tax exempt, what monies are coming back into our community to support? The local peoples, other than giving them a place to drink and eat? Um, what is the? The city of Oswego, like the the community, what is their?
Their benefit.
Their benefit other than a a building being repaired?
There's a number of benefits a project like this will bring to the community, um.
I'm ju- I'm sorry, not to, not to.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what I'm saying is, uh, specifically in terms of the pilot program over a twenty-five-year span, the amount of revenues that will be generated. In that twenty-five-year span versus all the tax exemptions.
Sure.
Is it really community?
Right now, the property is paying normal tax of eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars per year. Over the pilot, they'll be paying twenty-one thousand. So it's gonna be an increase in in revenue over what it currently is. The other concern would be that building is. If this goes on another year or two, that building's down, that the building doesn't exist anymore.
Sure, that's, it's not so much the building, the preservation. I understand all of that. I'm speaking in terms of all of the. The twenty-five years of tax exemption, like, that's a long time. That's a lot, a lot of revenue for Mr. Albertson and his company. Uh, and to bring in thirty-five jobs at six hundred thousand, you said, that's roughly, what, seventeen thousand-ish per person?
Thirty, thirty thousand. Well, if you're looking at it, it's about twenty full-time equipment jobs, twenty FTEs.
Okay, so, so.
But thirty thousand per, if you were looking at as FTEs.
So not exactly prevailing wage, um, what is, what is the community benefit here, other than the preservation of the building? I I understand that, but I'm talking long-term. He's, there's a lot, a lot of money to be made here and none of it is coming back to Oswego.
Yeah, I mean.
The community.
We see our roads get worse, our schools are becoming poorer. I mean. All of the money just seems to be getting sucked out by our community, out of our county, and goes to the next county over.
Riverpool or.
On Debal maybe? Um, and it just, it doesn't seem like it's really community-centered, first, like, county. You know, it just, I don't understand.
I feel like the money's being siphoned out and not pushed back in the community. Is my concern. Twenty-five years is a, is a long time to generate a lot of revenue. Between a brewery, if it is as successful and draws as much business as both of you presume it will, hopefully, best of luck it does. But that's a, that's a very large amount of revenue of which zero comes back to Oswego.
Well, there, there is a sales tax revenue on all those brewery sales, whether on in our town or. And a hundred percent of the sales tax generated in city of Oswego goes to the city of Oswego. It's not shared with the county. So there is that that benefit to your point. In addition, this pilot payment, this pilot program doesn't mean there isn't tax revenue. There is. And as Lawson said, it increases to an average of twenty-one thousand from just over eleven thousand now, so nearly doubling, um, the tax revenue for the city of Oswego, the counties we go in the, in the schools.
Well, that would be presumed because you're making hits of like monumental improvements out of the building. I mean, the building value is going to go up. So obviously, you're paying more in taxes. That's, I mean, doubling the taxes still isn't gonna.
Yeah, and then when Mr. Albertson's company in, you know, twenty-five years decide to sell to another company, if they do deem necessary. Uh, that's more revenue. That's generated for Mr. Albertson, which, other than the sales tax. Um, I just, I just don't think that the numbers add up and the benefit of the community of Oswego. And that a lot of the money is being taken out of Oswego and not so much is being put back in as is being taken out. I mean, you're talking sixteen thousand.
Well, the other, the other benefits that I didn't have a chance to finish are, um, the the payroll. I mean, mo- most likely the jobs here, while as as you did the math on the wages. These are fruits, essentially food service hospitality jobs, they're.
Less than prevailing.
You know, less than prevailing as a rule. That's, I mean, look at, look at the struggle restaurants have had, um. So tho- that will be the type of jobs. There there will be, of course, maintenance and other things. Contractors hired over those twenty-five years to maintain this building. This is a very old building which will require constant maintenance even once renovated, I'm sure. Um, and then se- and then in addition, uh. The purchases the restaurant makes would often be from, you know, if if not local, regional vendors typically.
Cisco.
Um. Well, you mentioned Cisco, but there's a lot of other things that go into a restaurant and and they, those those people employer, employ people locally as well. And then, of course, as Abby pointed out, the eight. The eight apartments could have, I think it was half two-bedroom and half one-bedroom. So, you know, theoretically. Maybe at least eight tenants, maybe up to sixteen, potentially more. Um, those people most likely would be employed in the city and. To be able to afford an apartment, quite frankly, a few thousand dollars a month, they would, they would have a significantly higher-than-average salary for city of Oswego. And would be most likely, since they live here, spending most of their disposable income in the city. Versus an executive at Novellus or the Nuke Plant or a senior engineer that may be living in Boltonsville, as you say. And taking their two hundred thousand dollar year salary and spending it in Boltonsville. If we can attract those people to live in the city of Oswego. Um, that's very advantageous for all of us. Cause they will be spending money in our community, which generates additional sales taxes, generates other jobs and other employers, um. At the other businesses they patronize. So. Having eight higher-income, uh, eight apartments occupied by above-average income people does benefit the city. They patronize the local businesses, they buy things, they spend their money here, the bank here, they eat dinner here, grocery shop here, all of it, which employs people and generates taxes. I mean, that's, that is quite, in my own words, I'm not speaking for the agency. That is the magic of what's happening in downtown Oswego right now. You mentioned Canal Commons earlier, that was probably about the first one. But then there were other, there's Stevedor Lofts or other products in the city which have attracted people to live here that can afford the things that keep our city going. So while these, there's a mix of housing downtown in these last five years, there's mixed income levels, there's some with requirements to meet certain income levels to live in, income levels to live in. This building isn't one of those. It's clear the market they're going for. It's the same market you're tracking Riverwalk. And we need that too. And and you're talking about benefits to the city. Someone that makes two hundred thousand dollars a year and there's. A ground zero of downtown Oswego versus someone that makes forty thousand dollars a year that lives in ground zero downtown Oswego. The person making two hundred thousand dollars a year brings more benefits to the city. So.
Sure.
I mean, there. Last point is, if this project isn't completed. The building, um, has been vacant for quite some time. It needs, uh, possibly ten million dollars in work. And as Lawson said, it may not be with us in a couple more years. It's that serious. When the prior owner was having engineering work done every year to just keep the thing literally falling into Water Street. So, but if that building's gone, there is no tax revenue. Most likely, the city acquires that lot, lot exit to the park and. There's no jobs, there's no residents, and there's no, um, tax revenue.
Don't wanna see it as a parking lot.
Yeah. So, that's what we're up against, you know.
Uh, yeah, it seems like the key here, I I've made this argument for other things, um, is people moving into the city and paying property taxes. That's what funds our schools and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are there data, does the city, or do you all have data on people moving in, you know, because of these improvements? I don't know if people were surveyed on these kinds of things. Uh, my sense is that it's happening, but it would be good to have some quantifiable, you know. Information on this.
Absolutely. I walk by them every morning in the hallways of our building. So we've got, we've got two young engineers that work at the nuclear plants that came right away. Their moms came to the lease signing. It is amazing to see. They, they're literally like twenty-one, twenty-two. They're my kids' age. And and coming in and living just to go and they wouldn't normally be coming here except for their job. And they wanted a place nearby to live and their mom wanted it to be safe and, you know, so so we have, um, doctors, dentists, um. And they're all coming into this area. And then a lot of people that we have stay with us for a year, we have found some of them then buy a house in Oswego. And as soon as it's ready, they go on a month-to-month because as soon as their house is ready, then they can move into their house. There are people that are coming into this area. Definitely. Um, we also have some people who are retirees who don't want their house here anymore. Want a place here, but also wanna be snowbirds. So the benefit for them to live in an apartment where there's a maintenance person that can check in on, you know. We go in and check just to make sure there wasn't any leak or anything. Um, that's bringing people that are, want to live here, want to be here, but don't wanna have the upkeep of their whole property. You know, people who are retired are 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 more and more getting into a property here and something.
Yeah, I was asking about homeowners, cause those are the ones who pay property taxes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so people are coming to live with us and then buying or building a house. And when that's ready, then they're, they're doing that in Oswego. Our goal is to build us, uh, to build up Oswego. We have childcare centers here, we have early intervention programs here, we have pizza, bagel, coffee. We have a high-speed company here, we have salon suites here, and we're trying to build Oswego. That is our goal.
What I would, and I'll I'll say too, is, uh. Being involved with Oswego Renaissance Association, it is quantifiable. I, in terms of an entire citywide survey being done, I'm not aware of that. But I mean, just to see the, the investment in in, uh, residences around the city, um, in in terms of new people moving in. Um, anecdotally, not necessarily in a, in a, in a quantified overall way, but it's pretty significant in terms of seeing what's what's going on. I mean, we're seeing a lot of people who, who would have worked out at the college and and and, you know, in the past would have lived in Raddison, Fayetteville, Boltonsville. They're choosing to live in city of Oswego now. Um, there's, there's neighborhoods that have, uh, that are becoming stronger, that have, um. You know, identity and confidence in the neighbors. Uh, we look at this, I look at this project and say. If, say, a, a, um. For example, a engineer out at the nuclear power plants or somebody who's gonna be working at Novellus is attracted to the area. And they're not ready to commit to making the purchase of a new home, but they wanna live in the area. They have the wherewithal to rent an apartment like this. See if they like the community. Maybe they're there one or two years, three years, and then they go ahead and they buy in the community. But if you didn't have these types of opportunities, market rate apartments. That they could move into, they may not ever make that decision because they decided they're living in a different community that they feel more confident about. We've seen that happen over and over again. We see people who. Who lived in Stevedor Lofts, who lived in Canal Commons, who, I don't know if the data would show it yet for Riverwalk, but the, there are people who. Have decided, listen, I'm dipping my toe in the market. I'm not ready to buy a place yet, but let's do this, be a nice place. And then, okay, I decided I like it here and then buy a house.
Mm-hmm.
I can't quantify it for you though.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's true. Uh, when Ann and I moved here in ninety-seven, we've almost been completely empty as far as. We got very lucky to find.
Yeah, and it's, there's a lot going on. I think that there's a lot of, between RA and these other groups are working on one end of it. And then we have this going on the other end of it, uh, and and really you need it working together or. Or, you know, maybe it does become a, you know, people stay for a couple of years and then they go buy a house somewhere else. But that's, that's what, what I'm seeing anyway.
Yeah, we we wanna build the local community. We wanna make this a place that people wanna live in and work and spend their time. Working on all aspects of it with with education, with healthcare, you know, we're, we contribute a lot to Oswego health, so that we can out of time and be there, so.
Okay, I have to go, but that's.
Okay, thank you for coming.
All right, any other comments? All right, at this time. It is ten forty-seven. I will end the public hearing.